This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Since 1974, Chuck Anderson Ford has proudly served the community's automotive needs. From new and pre-owned vehicles to parts and service, they've been there in the past and they'll be there in the future. Visit Chuck Anderson Ford today. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
You need to see your doctor through the slip. I was trying to renew the handicap card. And it says if you're seventy-five or older, you don't need a doctor.
Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on September fifteenth, 2025, and I call our city council meeting to order. We'll begin with an opening prayer. Let me gavel in first. I've been forgetting to do that. We'll begin with an opening prayer by Pastor Chad Wagner from Excelsior Springs Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Welcome, Chad.
Father in heaven, as we gather here together for this meeting, I pray thy blessing upon it. I pray that you give the councilmen wisdom as they make their decisions. I pray that they do what is best for the community always, and pray that you bless this community. Let this be a safe place to live and a good place to live, and keep us from evil, we pray. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chad. Could we have the city clerk deliver the roll call, please?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Here.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Here.
At this time, I will invite any visitors who would like to address the council. Seeing and hearing no activity, we will move on to approving the minutes of the budget work session of August twenty-ninth, 2025. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of the budget work session on August twenty-ninth, 2025.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of the budget work session from August twenty-ninth, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose like sign. Those minutes are approved. And now the minutes from the regular city council meeting of September second, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September second, 2025.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting of September second, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose like sign. Those minutes are approved. Now we'll move on to approving the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it has been printed and presented before you this evening.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed and presented.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
First item on our agenda, first three items on the agenda are proclamations. So we'll begin with our Good Neighbor Week. And if I could ask our neighborhood specialist, Ms. Laura Mize, to join me before the dais. We're going to face the camera right over here. There we go. Is that, is that good, Jason? Okay. Here we go. This is a proclamation of Missouri Good Neighbor Week, September twenty-eighth to October fourth, 2025. Whereas good neighbors result in good neighborhoods, and whereas research shows that developing positive neighbor relationships positively impacts mental health, life expectancy, and physical health for individuals. And whereas the Surgeon General has declared isolation and loneliness to be epidemics in the United States, but developing relationships with our neighbors can help us overcome loneliness, depression, and isolation. And whereas research shows that developing positive neighbor relationships can develop local leaders, reduce crime, aid in community decision-making, and improve emergency preparedness. And whereas neighboring is an opportunity to be thankful for those living nearest us, a chance to be a blessing or generous, and an opportunity also to receive. And whereas we understand that to have good neighbors, we must first be a good neighbor. And whereas the governor of Missouri signed legislation in 2022 to make September twenty-eighth to October fourth Missouri Good Neighbor Week. Now therefore, being resolved that I mayor or Spahn proclaim September twenty-eighth to October fourth, 2025, as Good Neighbor Week in Excelsior Springs. I call upon the people of Excelsior Springs to join me in observing the week by connecting with neighbors. Furthermore, I encourage our citizens to participate in Missouri Good Neighbor Week by nominating engaged neighbors to the Missouri Good Neighbor Week website as organized by the University of Missouri Extension and the Hopeful Neighborhood Project, and to participate in the mayor's block party challenge by planning or attending a block party in your neighborhood. So done, this fifteenth day of September, 2025. Laura? Let me say how much I appreciate your work in neighborhood engagement. And where are we at on our neighborhood block party?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. We're still thirty-five?
Yep.
We need to get busy. We've got about...
Fifty more?
Yeah.
So we've got them up in it.
That's right. All right. Thank you so much. Our second proclamation is for National Diaper Need Awareness Week. This is a lengthy one. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that nearly one in two families struggle with diaper need, and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas many parents struggling with diaper need report missing an average of five days of work each month due to an insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention, resulting in medical costs, and parents may be prevented from accessing childcare needed to go to work or school, thereby destabilizing the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas the people of the city of Excelsior Springs recognize that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's families and communities, and improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Excelsior Springs is proud to be home to trusted, community-based organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. And whereas through their important work of addressing diaper need, diaper banks play a critical role in supporting families, improving infant health and well-being, and advancing our local and state economic growth. Now therefore, I mark Spahn, mayor of the city of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, to hereby proclaim the week of September fifteenth through September twenty-first, 2025, as National Diaper Need Awareness Week. And I should have asked, is there anyone here to receive this? Okay. We'll, we'll hang this somewhere appropriate. Our third proclamation is honoring the centurion businesses of Excelsior Springs. And we had seven proclamations that were very lengthy, and so I combined them all into one for, for this purpose this evening. Proclamation honoring the centurion businesses of Excelsior Springs, Missouri. Whereas for more than a century, the city of Excelsior Springs has been shaped by businesses and institutions whose endurance, innovation, and community spirit have stood the test of time. And whereas Ameren Missouri, founded in nineteen oh two as Union Electric, has grown from serving two thousand customers to becoming Missouri's largest electric utility, powering homes and businesses while investing in environmental stewardship, community development, and clean energy solutions. And whereas the Atlas has served as a gathering place for more than a hundred and thirty years, beginning as a wood-framed saloon, transforming into the Schlitz Block in nineteen oh one, surviving prohibition and ownership changes, and thriving today as Excelsior Springs' local brewery and hub of hospitality. Whereas Griffey Insurance, established in nineteen twenty-one, has remained in downtown Excelsior Springs for over a century, carrying forward a legacy of trust and service through five generations of family leadership. And whereas the Standard Newspaper, founded in eighteen eighty-nine, has faithfully documented the life of Excelsior Springs for more than a hundred and thirty-five years, chronicling our triumphs, challenges, and everyday life, including historic visits such as President Harry Truman's in nineteen forty-eight. And whereas the Elms Hotel and Spa, first opening in eighteen eighty-eight, has endured fires, rebuilds, and closures, yet always risen again to remain a proud symbol of hospitality, welcoming presidents, honeymooners, and travelers alike, and standing today as a landmark of elegance and renewal. And whereas Excelsior Springs Hospital, founded in nineteen oh four by two nurses of Lord Tower Hill, has served the community with steadfast compassion and innovation for more than a hundred and twenty years, pioneering home health, assisted living, and radiology services. And whereas the Excelsior Springs Golf Course, established in nineteen oh nine, has provided generations of golfers with sport and fellowship, weathering the Great Depression and earning recognition as one of Missouri's most storied public courses. And whereas together, these seven centurion businesses reflect the very character of Excelsior Springs, resilient, innovative, and deeply rooted in community. Now therefore, I mark Spahn, mayor of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, to hereby recognize and honor these centurion businesses for their extraordinary legacy of service, endurance, and dedication to the people of Excelsior Springs. May their next century be as bold, inspiring, and prosperous as the last. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand this fifteenth day of September, 2025. And Kristin, for the hospital and each of these individual businesses, we'll print these up as individuals, the full version, and they will be presented at the CEC conference. And that does it for our proclamations. Number four on the agenda this evening is consideration of board reappointments to planning and zoning and hospital board, resolution number sixteen oh nine. And our city manager, Molly McGovern, will give us the details of these appointments.
Okay. These two boards have each two members that are eligible for reappointment, and Christie Marker and Dustin Borchert are willing and able to re-serve the next term on planning and zoning, as is Mike Anderson and Janine Stubbs to continue serving on the hospital board of trustees. Those are presented for council to consider.
Any question from Molly on these appointments? Hearing none, we have before us a resolution reappointing Christie Marker and Dustin Borchert to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mike Anderson and Janine Stubbs to the hospital board of trustees. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number sixteen oh nine.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution sixteen oh nine, consideration of board reappointments to planning and zoning and the hospital board.
Second.
Go ahead, Reggie.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Resolution number sixteen oh nine is approved. Number five on the agenda this evening is consideration of awarding remediation bid to Titan Environmental Services, resolution number sixteen ten. And I believe we have Melinda Mahaffey, our Economic Development Director, on the wall to give us the details of this resolution. Melinda, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have for your consideration this evening a resolution for six hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents to Titan Environmental. This is the company that, one of two companies that had bid to do the asbestos lead-based paint and hazardous material removal for the Wyman School. And this is, this is in addition to a two hundred, a part of a two hundred fifty thousand dollar EIA grant, and funding from the Capital Improvement Authority, which they approved at their August meeting. And so this evening, we're asking for approval on this so we can get started on this project, and would have it complete, I believe, by the end of January. Any questions?
Hearing no questions, we have before us a resolution awarding the bid for the asbestos lead-based paint and hazardous waste remediation project at the former Wyman School to Titan Environmental Services Incorporated in the amount of six hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number sixteen ten.
Move to approve resolution number sixteen one zero, consideration of awarding remediation bid to Titan Environmental Services. Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Resolution number sixteen ten is approved. Number six on the agenda is consideration of twenty twenty-five Streetscape Project Change Order Number One with McInnany Construction, resolution number sixteen eleven. And our Public Works Director Chad Burtsong will deliver the details of this resolution to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The existing contract with McInnany was for a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Change Order One has been prepared for an increase of eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for a new total of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. This includes adding Rose Avenue, Golden Avenue, and Miss Bell to the U-Bass overlay street list. Time extension is to October fifteenth was also given for this work. This change order still fits within the overall allocated and approved budget for the twenty twenty-five Streetscape Project, and it is included for your reference. Change Order One is attached. A resolution is attached also for your acceptance. Happy to answer any questions.
Hearing no questions or comments, we have before us a resolution approving twenty twenty-five Streetscape Project Change Order Number One with McInnany Construction LLC. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number sixteen eleven.
I move we approve resolution sixteen eleven, consideration of twenty twenty-five Streetscape Project Change Order Number One with McInnany Construction. Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution number sixteen eleven is approved. Number seven on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for the Public Transportation fifty-three eleven grant. Before we open that public hearing, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item and ask Chad to deliver the staff report for ordinance number twenty-five zero nine zero seven.
All right. Attachment is ordinance for your consideration and approval, authorizing the mayor to execute an application for financial assistance from the Missouri Department of Transportation to support the city's transportation department. This grant is otherwise known as section fifty-three eleven of chapter fifty-three, title forty-nine of the United States Code. This grant application is for one year. The project period is July one of twenty twenty-six through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. The total operating expense budget is two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, with federal funds of a hundred and fifty-two, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and a local match of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. The total capital funding budget for the same period is zero, due to the fact that we've already applied for and received approval for the funding for four new vehicles this budget year, and they are, a couple of them are in the way, in the timeframe of getting sent to us as we speak. And it is recognized that this budget is presented without the city council's approval of the budget, as it is the next agenda item. So the numbers do align, though.
We'll hold off on questions for Chad on that agenda item until the public hearing is, is finished. So I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing on Public Transportation fifty-three eleven grant.
Move to open public hearing for consideration of application of five-three-one-one transportation grant. Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Being noted that the public hearing was opened at six nineteen PM, we'll wait just a few seconds. And if we don't see any movement...
Okay, the clock is already switched. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the fifty-three eleven grant.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the Public Transportation fifty-three eleven grant. Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern? Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Public hearing for Public Transportation fifty-three eleven grant is closed at six twenty PM. So we will move on. You've heard the staff report for ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine dash zero seven for the fifty-three eleven transportation grant. Do you have any questions or comments for Chad?
Nope.
Hearing none, this is an ordinance and will require two readings. We have before us an ordinance to authorize the mayor to apply for federal financial assistance on behalf of the city of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, and to execute any contracts resulting from such application for any grants between the city of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, providing for capital, operating, and/or marketing assistance comprised of federal funds to be expended for the commission-approved transit projects. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine dash zero seven to second reading. I move that we take ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine dash zero seven, consideration of application of fifty-three eleven transportation grant to second reading.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And for that second reading, we have before us an ordinance to authorize the mayor to apply for federal financial assistance on behalf of the city of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, and to execute any contracts resulting from such application for any grants between the city of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, providing for capital, operating, and/or marketing assistance comprised of federal funds to be expended for commission-approved transit projects. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine dash zero seven.
I move we approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine dash zero seven, consideration of application of fifty-three eleven transportation grant. Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine dash zero seven is approved. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget approval, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine dash zero eight. And our city manager, Molly McGovern, would love to give us the details of next year's budget.
I would. Thank you. I'm pleased to present the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six budget for your consideration. This budget serves as a planning document to advance the city council's established priorities, which also guide department work plans. General fund highlights include that the property values for calendar year twenty-five increased eleven percent over twenty-four with inflation of two point nine, anticipating the tax rate will be reduced. The city council is scheduled to set the tax rate in two weeks. This year's property taxes also reflect new legislation changes for senior-owned properties. Sales tax collections decreased eleven percent in twenty-five, following a seven percent increase in twenty-four. Internet sales tax, however, rose five percent in twenty-five after a twenty-three percent increase in twenty-four. Ambulance billing collections grew thirty-nine percent in twenty twenty-three, five percent in twenty twenty-four, but dropped twenty-nine percent in twenty twenty-five, as EMS recorded its lowest call volume in thirteen years. Overall, general fund revenues fell eight percent in twenty twenty-five after a seven percent increase in twenty twenty-four. No cost of living or merit pay increases are budgeted at this time. We will reevaluate in six months as our priority to ensure salaries remain competitive for employee retention and recruitment. Community investments. One of the community's top priorities is to see improvements in neighborhood streets. From the revenue increases experienced in the past couple of years, it was possible to increase our investment street maintenance from seven hundred and fifteen thousand to one point six million. October twenty-three, the city completed a payment condition index report, giving our asphalt streets a grade of forty-five, overall poor condition, and our concrete streets a grade of seventy-two, satisfactory condition, with a combined score of forty-eight. Our goal is to raise the combined score to sixty, which will require an annual maintenance budget of one point three seven million. That includes cracked ceiling, base repair, U-Bass, and cracked chip ceiling for thirteen to twenty lane miles of work per year. Additionally, our goal for a biannual reconstruction program of one point one million is also needed. We will be able to satisfy this reconstruction goal during fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six with the completion of the Dry Fork and Garland Bridge projects that will reconstruct a portion of North Main and Salem Road, Kennedy, and the approaches to Garland Bridge. A long-term funding solution is needed for annual reconstruction program. Without grants, funding is only sufficient for maintenance of standard-conditioned streets, and grants are typically not available for neighborhood streets. During fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we expect to complete the Dry Fork Greenway and Garland Bridge projects. We anticipate completion of the preliminary design of the race-funded Westside projects. We expect to see the start of sewer lining and water treatment plan improvements that are funded with the assistance of WRDA funds. Funds that were budgeted to complete a sewer master plan this year to prioritize needed investments. We would like to complete a stormwater master plan and evaluate an automated water metering system, such as AMI, in the coming year. Council goals include seeking funds for Dunbar North Thompson, one hundred and forty-third Street bridges, and downtown Streetscape, and funding for the next year, next phase of the Fish River Watershed Plan. Using the capital improvement sales tax as grant matching funds has been critical to the city's ability to seek federal funds to complete these large, significant projects. As it pertains to community attractiveness, our partnership with Thrive, the use of chapter three fifty-three, our partnership with Westside and Downtown CID's continue to give us encouragement on our appearance code compliance, blight removal incentives, and nuisance abatement. The Comprehensy Plan completion... The Comprehensy Plan completion and ongoing review of development ordinances is underway. Completion of a market analysis and recruitment package for business attractive is also on the way. Focus on redevelopment of Wyman, Royal, Roosevelt, the old hospital and bank buildings is a priority. November election will consider the annexation of a growth area on the west side of town between Rotus Road, Highway 69, 136, and 140th Street. Housing development conversations are underway on the west side. As to operational efficiency, we have used technology upgrades for our agenda management systems, EMS reporting systems, building permits, code enforcement, business licenses with online payments. The fire training facility is nearing completion and offers realistic training scenarios for our firefighters. We are exploring funding for a meal and a visit program for homebound seniors, which is a real need for our community. We are evaluating the elimination of municipal court, shifting to Clay County, anticipated savings of $206,000 annually, and that includes the court's operating costs and police overtime. In special funds, Park and Rec continues to maintain parks in excellent condition, offers recreational programming. They wish to construct a shop within their existing building this year and invest in boundless backyard and all-inclusive park. The capital improvement sales tax fund is working with annual technology upgrades, building improvements, emergency siren repairs as needed, and demolition and blight removal. Funds have been approved for golf equipment and grant matching funds for Dry Fork Greenway, Garland Street Bridge, sewer relining, and the RACE project. Future needs under development with capital improvements funds includes a courtyard study for the Hall of Waters to learn what permanent solutions would ensure structural stability, sub-basement dehumidification, Hall of Waters elevator replacement, Lithia landing stairs and rock wall repair, reconstruction of the tower or the window that has the steel jacking in the wall. Cemetery columbarium is also on the table for capital improvements. Trans Trust is guiding their priorities by the subsurface scanning report and has a goal, as we've already mentioned, to raise their score to 60. Other special funds includes the Elms event fee, the construction services fund, grant management fund, public safety sales tax, community center funds, Elms Hotel TIF, Golf Clubhouse TIF, and Phase Three project, which is the pool pack at the community center. In our enterprise funds, the proposed rates for water, sewer, and trash are: the water base rate would move from $16.97 to $17.74. The water per thousand gallon rate would go from $7.83 to $8.19. The sewer base rate would change from $24.69 to $24.23. The sewer per thousand gallon rate would change from $12.12 to $11.88. And the trash rate would change from $25 to $23.50. The utility rates are anticipated to go into effect on January 1, and the trash rate would go into effect October 1. The water fund has a, the projects planned for the water fund includes the sludge line adjustment, the system maintenance that is ongoing, treatment plant roof replacement, and lime slaker replacement. Plan improvements in the sewer fund include the master plan, plant lift station collection system maintenance. The golf fund states their rounds are continuing to increase today. They've said for the last 12 months, they've had 30,000 rounds of golf. The pump house replacement is planned, and the golf course has been profitable since 2021. The airport fund is currently profitable and has been since 2024. The refuge fund, we will be under new contract in a couple of weeks and are looking forward to enjoying good service. The cemetery fund includes in-house staff providing in property condition maintenance, and we're very pleased with the service they provide us. And that's it.
That's quite a lot.
But that's a lot.
Any questions for Molly on the budget?
Not necessarily a question for Molly, but I just... Sure. I want to express my thanks, Chad, to you and your team. I know there was a little extra homework from our work discussions of where could we maybe do some things differently from chemical costs, and was able to find some savings there. So just appreciate that extra help.
And I also want to comment that while it might appear that this is all kind of cut and dried, and we just absorbed all of this information on the fly, this represents weeks and weeks of work.
At least they four months.
Four months. And discussion back and forth. And so, that being said, want the public to know that out there on the Excelsior citizen and those who are attending tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I am disappointed that the salary situation is the way it is, but I understand that there's been some physical constraints that have impacted the budget process, several of which we had no control over. And I'm glad that we're going to review it in six months, and maybe we can do something at that point in time.
I appreciate that comment. Yeah, when your revenue falls 8%, and last year's was up 7%, it's quite an adjustment. So I appreciate that comment. If there's no further questions or comments, we have before us an ordinance adopting a budget for the period, October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026, and authorizing the expenditures of funds, all for and in behalf of the city of Excelsior Springs, Missouri. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-09-08 to second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to take ordinance 25-09-08, consideration of fiscal year 2026 budget approval, to second reading.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And for that second reading, we have before us an ordinance adopting a budget for the period, October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026, and authorizing the expenditures of funds, all for and in behalf of the city of Excelsior Springs, Missouri. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-09-08.
I move we approve ordinance number 25-09-08, consideration of fiscal year 2026 budget approval.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And ordinance number 25-09-08 is approved, and we have a budget for next year.
The last item on the agenda is our August revenue report and financials for review, and our finance director, Vonda Floyd, will present the details before the council. Welcome, Vonda.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Presented within your council packets, the finance department provided for your review the details of appropriations and revenues for the month of August 2025. The appropriations are in accordance with the city's purchasing policy and are as follows. Appropriations on August 7, $423,322.15. Appropriations on August 14, $626,098.19. Appropriations on August 21, $1,662,773.18. And appropriations on August 28 of $323,626.32. Within those appropriations, I wanted to highlight some larger payments that only come around very, not very regularly. Within that, $1,700,974 were for city debt payments. Each of those bond or certificate of participation payments each have two payments per year. One payment is interest only, and one payment is principal and interest only. So we will have kind of the opposite of what we're paying right now coming due in March of 2026. Also, within those payments, $31,179 was a payment to DNR for Department of Natural Resources, which is primacy fee and sewer connect fees. We collect those on behalf of DNR, and we pass those fees on once a year with reporting also. And also, our annual, we had some annual renewal for our insurance payments, $340,293. That was for property, crime, and cyber premiums. That's also within those appropriations. We had payroll on August 15 of $428,422.77, and payroll on August 29 of $439,370.21. For total appropriations for the month of August, $3,903,612.82. We also had revenue in the month of August. Revenues totaled $2,295,801.70, and that was detailed on page 35 of your revenue report. Revenue and appropriations for the month of August.
Any questions or comments for Vonda?
Thank you.
I have one comment.
Sure.
Thank you, and your team for keeping track of our finances, and I like how you couched that last remark there. And we had revenue. That's fairly important.
I like it when revenue's higher, but I wanted to be able to explain to you why it's not this week.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That is for review only and needs no council action. So with that, that brings us to remarks, and we'll move over to our city manager, Molly.
Just will enjoy a depth dinner this week.
Yes.
That's our next event.
Inside or out?
We're hoping outside, but everything could be kind of wet during the week.
Looks like it. Okay. We'll move down to the other end. Councilman Rennie?
Yes, as I saw neighbors getting excited today as Redgate is going through our communities, distributing the new trash containers. And I watched as neighbors would read the little information they gave, and I had two of my neighbors comment and said they're happy that we changed companies, and they're happy that it's starting right away.
Oh, look, they left me a personal note. Thank you, Gary. Councilman McGovern?
Oh, with respect to the Meals on Wheels program that was mentioned earlier, the senior center has submitted a grant request in the amount of $21,000 to the Clay County Senior Services Board, and they will be meeting this Thursday to make a decision on that, and the recommendation from the executive director is to approve it.
Awesome.
Hopefully, we'll have some good news at the end of the week.
Awesome. I will say the mayor got to attend one of the senior center meals this past week, and what a delight. We heard a report from one of the employees of the hospital, and so it was quite the entertaining event. I enjoyed it a lot. Had taco salad, how can you go wrong?
No broccoli?
No broccoli.
Good.
All right. Councilman Spear?
We have our Night Out Against Crime coming up September 27, so excited about that. Be a time for our fine police department to defend their championship bragging rights against the fire department for tug-of-war, but that starts at 5:30. And 5:30 or 6:00?
5:30.
5:30, yeah. So, because it's getting darker earlier, but please come down. We'll have police cars, fire trucks, Public Works, I think, will be there with the ever-popular flusher and back truck, so.
My money's on the, my money's on the police department in the challenge.
Well, I heard we have a spectacular announcer.
We have a ringside announcer. I've been invited to do the ringside announcing, and I grew up with Don Kirsten from All-Star Wrestling in those days. So I'm going to try to channel...
Oh, my gosh.
It's less than everything. Looking forward to... Mayor Protim?
Well, in the, looking at neighbor, good neighbor week. Last week, I had an opportunity, it was kind of funny. A gentleman is relocated, actually located to the Kansas City area from Southern California. And we were pulling into a business, he had left his vehicle out for service, and the driveway was kind of narrow, and there's a person coming out, and we were going in. And we were both kind of going by a slope, and we both waved at each other. He goes, "Somebody you know?" I go, "Nope." He said, "That would have never happened in Southern California."
Might have happened, but it wouldn't have been the whole hand.
Just one finger.
So I thought that was kind of interesting. He's starting to get into the whole Midwest, and he went out on a pickup truck, so he didn't have to use...
He's in.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he starts wearing cowboy boots, he's really in.
He's got the hat.
Oh, does he?
Yeah.
Okay. That's awesome. All right. Yeah, I have, I have the pleasure of having a lot of conversations with people from out of town at the breakfast table at the B&amp;B. This week, I had three ladies who was in, mother and two daughters, it was supposed to be three daughters, and one of them got sick, wasn't able to come, but they came in for the wine trolley. And so they were just delighted with that whole experience. And every time I recommend somebody to Ventana Gourmet Grill, they come back and they go, "Oh, that is awesome. It took a while to get our food, but it's awesome." It's a very popular place, and just appreciate all of our businesses downtown. And that will conclude my remarks, so I will entertain a motion to close the meeting pursuant to Section 610.021.1 and 610.021.2, revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the revised statute of Missouri, Chapter 610.021, Paragraphes 1 and 2.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And the meeting is closed. Thank you all for attending.